I'd like to call to order the December 4, 2019 Council Committee of the whole meeting. Would you please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag? Okay, we'll be starting with the presentation, but first, I'd like to acknowledge we have some new visitors and attendees this evening from the Hill School. I understand it is Miss someone's government class, and I guess they came tonight for us to prove that everything in the book is not the way it works. So, thank you for attending. We're starting with a presentation from the Montgomery County Community College Pottstown Campus. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Vazteki Perez, interim president at Montgomery County Community College. With me this evening is Frank Custer, the Chair of the Board of Trustees, and Tharol Dix, our Vice President of the West Campus. I want to thank the borough for the opportunity for the college to share some exciting initiatives that we are examining the feasibility to bring to our West Campus in Pottstown. It's a very exciting time as we recently celebrated 23 years of being a member of this community, and we have a steadfast commitment to grow the pipeline of a talented workforce for the future. So, thank you very much, Borough Council, for the opportunity for us to share this with you this evening. The first initiative that we'd like to share that our Board has enabled us to explore the feasibility of having an immersion experience to STEM interest in STEM careers for children as well as for adults and the greater community. We are exploring the feasibility of bringing a Challenger Center to our West Campus in Pottstown. The Challenger Center concept was birthed after the tragedy of the shuttle and in honor and in memory of the importance of that journey, of the opportunity to ensure our future as the United States of America in STEM education, being leaders and continuing the good work that was intended. The Challenger Center has 43 centers worldwide, and this, if it comes to fruition, would be the first Challenger Center in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, not only would it be a flagship to Montgomery County, to the tri-county area, but also to Pennsylvania. So, we're very excited about that. The Challenger Center is partnering now with colleges and universities because of our similar missions and values of being able to provide experiences not only in higher education, but our deep connections and roots in our communities, being able to provide pipeline from K-12 to higher education, and ultimately to develop a talented workforce. The centers that are in existence have had the opportunity to have more than 5.5 million individuals experience a Challenger Center. In a given year, a single Challenger Center could garner in the tens of thousands of individuals to the campus and to our community. So, I want to share with you a very brief video so that you can get a flavor of what it would be like. A trip to a Challenger Learning Center brings positive lessons to life. We work every day to engage students in science, technology, engineering, and math and inspire them to pursue careers in those fields. Spacecraft Distribution Control, New Region, Global. The Challenger Center experience is dynamic and unparalleled to anything else offered to students. The Challenger Learning Center is awesome. So, right now, the college is in what's considered a feasibility study to look at placement, potential financial support for bringing the Challenger Center. With the center, it provides a wealth of networks across the entire world. One of the largest partners is with NASA themselves. It provides complete curriculum for K-12 education, provides opportunities for our own college students to intern, to experience the facility as learners, as well as business and industry to come in and use the center for team building as well as other reasons. With the curriculum, not only are the different missions that are provided, provide students with an insight into STEM careers, but actually each youth that participates in the Challenger Center provides the opportunity for them to learn about various careers, and each of the roles is directly connected with a career. So, a student can perform a role, and if they like it, we can talk with them about a career in accounting, computer science. It's not the goal of having everyone become an astronaut, but really to STEM and ignite fuel and interest in the STEM careers. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up. Certainly, this is a venture that requires a lot of partnerships, a lot of engagement. Vice President Dix has already been speaking with Superintendent Rodriguez about the possibilities, not only for the Pottstown's high school students, but also the K-8 students as well.
No, this is a really exciting time for the college to explore this opportunity. We really believe that it will be a wonderful way to create a pipeline for future Montgomery County, Pottstown campus STEM and the least. We're looking forward to it.
The Challenger Center is a part of a wider, broader initiative that we have at the college. The technical...
It's up.
Hopefully, there we go. Okay, thank you. We are undergoing right now a visioning of our West Campus, which this particular presentation, one of the notables, is we're considering the change of our West Campus and nomenclature and calling it our Pottstown Campus. And our central campus located in Blue Bell then would become the Blue Bell Campus. We feel that that would provide a lot more strength to our communities. It would be a better way to communicate with all of our stakeholders that Montgomery County Community College is located in Pottstown and is located in Blue Bell, as well as our virtual campus. So, this particular presentation has been shared with our Board of Trustees. It's also been shared with our county commissioners. It is truly a draft. It is not complete. It is just something we're excited to begin sharing out, and we're going to be having an open forum coming up later this month to engage others in the community, to provide input and to help inform the future of our Pottstown campus. Our Pottstown Campus really is a quadrangle. When we look at the aerial view, we have our original building, South Hall, right off of College Drive. We also have our East High Street location here with our North Hall. Coming up, we have our Hanover Street Building, and then we have the Spookville River Heritage Greenway Association, our sustainability and innovation hub. This particular hub here is the likely center that we're vetting right now for our STEM Pavilion that would house that Challenger Center should have come to fruition. It's pretty typical for a college campus to have a quadrangle, but some of the challenges that we have in the Pottstown area is that we have more disparate buildings. We don't really have a college experience for our students, connecting building by building and better connecting with our greater community. This is our North Hall, which is right off of the High Street. And then we also have, this is the back end of South Hall, which is connected by the underpass. There's the connector, and you can see that you can get to South Hall, which is our primary academic building. When we take a closer look at our South Hall, that original building from 1996, it's pretty invisible. It's pretty institutional. It really doesn't have any identity. There are faculty offices, we have our student support, but if you're going down College Drive, it's pretty discreet, and it doesn't really have a lot from an outside and inviting perspective for our prospective students as well as for the community. This is our sustainability and innovation hub. We are fortunate to have the partnership with the Greenway Association, and it's a quasi-STEM building right now. It has hydroponics and aquaponics in there, and there are some wind turbines in the parking lot, and there are some 3D printing and some basic technology in that particular building. But again, it's one that does not have a lot of connection, and it's not fulfilling its potential from a leadership perspective. When we look at Hanover, which is over here, there's a very small parking lot. Again, it doesn't have really a distinct vibe at all. It just looks like a building that is present, and it's very nondescript. Finally, we have some challenges with utilities that are sort of in between our buildings, and we also have a very important turnout for our public transportation. But the turnout does cause some traffic flow issues for us, and sometimes it can be unwell for pedestrian traffic. So, what we'd like to do is now talk a little bit about connecting the campus, providing a greater college experience and a greater community experience. We've been doing a lot of research, not only internally, but also with the Monaco 2040 Plan, Monaco Forward, the live, work, learn, and invest concepts, our own strategic plan for the college, which has a complete commitment to our West Campus, which goes through 2022. We have a facilities master plan, which finishes in 2022. And one of the buildings that's on the master plan that I'll be sharing with you is that South Hall is getting renovation through that particular plan. We've also had a lot of community conversations in the last few months, and Tharol and I have both had the privilege of being part of the Urban Land Institute study and had the pleasure of providing feedback on behalf of the college. So, with all of that in mind, where did we start? Well, we literally started with a whiteboard and started sketching out what could the possibilities look like? How could we be creative and inspire ideation and innovation for our students and for our community? The Board of Trustees recently revised our mission and vision statements to not only focus on student success, but to have a very clear commitment to community engagement, being an economic driver and catalyst for change and providing a greater stability for financial and economic prosperity. So, we had the opportunity, as I said, with the South Hall renovation of $4.25 million, which 50% is being sponsored by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We also recently received and announced a Title III grant of $2 million from the U.S. Department of Education to help support our Pottstown Campus and support our students. So, where we're at today is enhancing not only our academic portfolio, but providing wellness opportunities for our students, enhancing sports. We're bringing esports, electronic sports activities in January to West Campus, and we're aligning our plans with the Pottstown Planning Plan. So, what we're thinking about is we really need to have distinct gateways into our college. This is our primary gateway, but again, when I showed you the pictures, it's very nondescript until you get down College Drive. We also have a northern gateway. With our North Hall right off of High Street, there's an opportunity to have a secondary gateway. And we're looking at the pavilion concept, similar to Disney and other models, where you're bringing pavilions and engagement activities within each of the areas. I had mentioned the STEM Pavilion, which is our current innovation and sustainability hub, taking our South Hall and making it an innovation pavilion, the creativity pavilion, which would be our North Hall, which creativity and performing arts, and then providing some outdoor connector spaces so that we perhaps may have community garden and market, some outdoor activity and recreation that can be used not only by the college students, but also by our community. We also have the opportunity, and we've been working with Valley Forge, Visitors, and Convention Board, on opportunities where we could bring groups in to help stimulate the economy in Pottstown as well. And finally, in our Hanover Street Building, we would not only have our workforce development programs in our Congress Pavilion, but we're also considering the opportunity to open this building up and have community nonprofits, Montgomery County Social Services, and other entities providing services or potential services on campus so that our community have access to complete services as well as our students at large. This type of concept, again, it's not in complete form, but this is the direction that we seem to be moving towards, will provide some definite thoroughfare affairs and begin having a more robust college experience. So, what might that look like to you coming down College Drive? We envision some type of gateway or entrance, some signage with digital signs, very similar to what you're seeing in many of the small towns to welcome individuals, let them know that they are at a special destination, and then we can co-share the digital messages, whether they be college messages, they be community messages, or just generalization. We see this as being an urban feel to give nod and pay homage and respect to the strong sense of history of Pottstown and have unifying walkways and pathways. So, going back to that aerial view, and I want to focus your attention here to that outdoor recreation potential space and what that might look like, having some community gardens, perhaps having some small areas where we can have chefs or different restaurants, have the ability, using the train as an asset and a backdrop to design, having some benches, having some tables, and then having the outdoor recreational space. Our North Hall would be located over in that direction. The STEM Pavilion, which again would potentially house the Challenger Center as well as other assets that we will bring online, could have a facade, a video wall, where we could have not only pictures, messaging, but we could also have movies for the community, had drive-in type movies where you could sit outside and have this as a whole video wall. But if you can imagine coming down College Drive and seeing this images there to draw us into the area. The gateway that I had showed you earlier has the stanchions with the digital signage, and that's where the stars are. We envision also having some type of signage, similar signage, throughout the college experience so that there is, again, a sense of community, a sense of college community and destination feel. We often think these walkways and gateways, which will give our college students greater access to the community as well as the community greater access to the college, will also be a sense of pride for all of those involved. Some of the next steps, we're confirming our feasibility study. In addition to looking at the buildings and the academic assets and the programming that we have at our Pottstown Campus, we are also working with an architect on a feasibility study, looking at our exterior spaces, looking at those as engagement spaces and how the community in the 21st century use outdoor spaces. We've also even considered in our North Hall, the very small parking lot that we have, 23 parking spaces, that maybe that might be a good place where we actually make it green space. And it could be a small parklet. It could be an area where we have more community garden. It could be an area where we just put some park benches and have some nice green space as part of our campus and our greater community. Continue to explore partnerships, secure our architect for planning of our South Hall renovation. We're incorporating our grant activities and again, continuing to engage our stakeholders. I want to thank you for listening. Thank you for your time. And again, this is just preliminary concept, but Tharol and I wanted to share with you what the preliminary findings are and what direction and what assets we may be bringing to the Pottstown Campus. Tharol, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to thank the Pottstown community. Since my leadership here, about three months, I guess at this point, I've had an opportunity to meet a number of you, many people in the community, and I've listened to your comments and suggestions, and much of what you see today is based on feedback that we have received, and we're trying very much to listen to what you feel that you need in Pottstown and provide that for you as best we can.
Thank you for your partnership.
Is there anything we, the borough, could do to help you forward this?
Yes, Tharol, and I will be following up with you as well as many of your stakeholders in the room, who we wanted to share in this public forum first, some of the concepts. But it's really a collective work. It's a collective work, not only from the college, but from all of you as our partners in this endeavor. So, yes, we will be following up with you.
Wonderful.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and your interest.
Okay, next, we have a presentation from Pottstown Trees, Inc. Mr. Hilton.
So, this is the fourth year I'm coming before you to talk about tree trimming and maintenance in the borough. Today, we received notice from the Health and Wellness Foundation that we received a $35,000 grant, which my wife and I are matching the 35, so we'll have $70,000 to do.
Tom, can you get closer to the mic?
So, we received notice that we received a $35,000 grant from the Health and Wellness Foundation, which my wife and I are matching. So, we'll have $70,000 to maintain, to cut down dead trees, replace them with other trees, new trees, and treat trees for Emerald Ash Bore. What we've done in the last three years is I will be sending to the, assuming council approves this, I'll be sending to the borough manager a list of the work to be done for his approval. Once he's approved that, we'll send a letter to all the affected property owners, adjacent property owners, saying this is what we're planning to do, no cost to you, and if you have any concerns, here's my email address, here's my phone number, you can give me a call, and then we'll proceed with the work. The tree trimming and removal would be in January, February, and March. New trees would come in late March or April. In May, we'll be treating all the ash trees for the third time for Emerald Ash Bore. Last time we treated 144 ash trees. We may plan to do a few more. So, that's what I'm proposing. Council has agreed to this the last three years. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have a question. Tom, out of the trees that were recently planted at the nursery, how many of them survive?
There are 70 live trees as of the fall. Two of them would be big enough to transplant next spring. Mr. Lenhart is already trying to place dibs on them for Riverfront Park. The rest of them will be another couple of years.
So, we lost 30 from the seedlings that were planted?
Yeah, we lost 30, which considering that we planted them at the worst possible time of the year, which was July, as a result of the delay in getting the topsoil put in. So, considering that, it turned out pretty well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Along with your own inventory that you do on the trees and everything, do you accept requests from residents if they need something done?
If it's in the public right of way, and we don't do anything on private property, but if it's in the public right of way, somebody calls something to my attention. The nice thing frankly about private money is you do have discretion about what's in the best interest of the borough. In the letter that you may all have, planting new trees would be basically in our major thoroughfares because the most people are going to see them. But I already had a call from a real estate agent who said that there's a sidewalk that's lifted and she can't, the property owner is poor, I don't know, and I said I'll take a look at it, assuming I get permission to go forward. So, if you get a, if I get a request, and it seems it's in the public interest, I certainly want to consider it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Jim lines, Pottstown guys, I'm Adam Sager from the Pottstown Carousel. Some of this is repeat, guys, so bear with us. We have some plans for you. We revamped the edition that we had done due to some concerns that Justin and Keith showed us. So, we went over these with the borough staff. We're here tonight just to get your blessing on minor changes to fall into the blood plane. Excuse me. Also, to, when talking to your staffs, we need, we request the waiver of a minor subdivision plan that we had talked about. Since the borough owns the property, you're kind of going through your own rules, we do want to absolutely abide by the stormwater and everything else, and we'll present grading plans and the stormwater management plan. But the minor subdivision, from your engineer's perspective, really didn't apply here, other than a grading and whatnot, and especially since you own the building, you have the right to waive that. So, that's what we're here to ask for today so that we could get the project started and hopefully get finished before summer. We're ready to go. We have all the funds in place. It's probably at $800,000 to a million dollars. It's probably an $800,000 to a million dollar addition on a building, so we're looking forward to that. If any of you had the opportunity, we did put in our patios with our fire pit and water feature, which turned out really well. So we are enhancing the property substantially. But we need this step to move forward so that we can finish the drawings, go out to bid for the project, and get the project started. The other thing that we had talked about, and I think that we're about time, and Chuck got it, I don't know if you remember, but we're probably time to renew that lease. We'd like to get pretty close, so we'd like to go for at least a long-term lease if we're going to invest this money in the building. And we have some other options too that we could discuss. So essentially, that's what we're here to, one, show you the plans, the finished plans, that will include a mezzanine level in the Carousel building. But we need to proceed forward, I guess, from Justin's perspective and the engineer's perspective, to waive that minor subdivision plan and accept the grading plan and stormwater management plan enough so that we can get started and pull all the permits and make this process happen.
So I have an additional set of plans, I think Justin has one as well. I'm just going to hand it up to Jimmy, and everybody can review it at their time. The plans, as Jim did indicate, there's nothing substantially changed from what was presented way back from the original concept, when I appeared before the council last October, then we showed the actual drawings through our architect. These are just a step forward without simplifying any questions that were posed at last time. One update, I was here a couple months back with regard to a liquor license for the Carousel. The restaurateur who was proposing to move in once we got approval was not a successful bidder at that point in time, so that is unfortunately not on the table at the present time. If and when another Montgomery County, preferably obviously, will make things easier, another Montgomery County license comes available, someone on behalf of the Carousel will come back and we'll go through the same steps that took place beforehand. So we would just ask that, you review it, and any questions, obviously we're always available to answer those.
Okay.
Do you have copies for him?
I can provide more copies to Justin, just give me the email. I think you have your copies now.
And Jim, I just looked at the current lease based upon an addendum from 2016, and it, right now, it looks like there are a term of eight additional five-year terms. So I mean, you have the property locked up for a relatively long period of time under the current lease, so it would just continue to renew under those five-year increments unless you have some other idea.
Yeah, I remembered something about when we opened up, that it was supposed to be, I couldn't remember.
I mean, that was the trigger, but once that happened, then it's eight five-year terms, so it's 40 years of.
Despite anything else, we would want to talk about, we can absolutely talk about in the future.
Yeah, I think it's up to, obviously, council, if they would like to continue with the purely purpose landlord-tenant relationship, or if there is some type of relationship that they need to move forward and you take ownership of the property, so it's no longer on the borough's lap. All right? Thank you very much.
And also, as Trees Inc., we didn't get quite that much, but Health and Wellness did today notify us, that we did get a grant for $25,000 to enhance the mini golf course and put shade up. So much needed shade. So we'll be working on that project as well, and probably be talking to you, you worry about that one as well. So that's a positive, though. We've made some good improvements, I think, on the course now. Michael's been very helpful, kudos to all your staff, Justin and Keith, and Michael have really helped us out. We're working well together, and I'm happy to have worked for that. And Dr. Sessana is sold out, I think, so.
Oh, I was going to announce it, but since you said it.
Superhero, superhero princess party that works.
So I would just like to clarify a couple things, based on your requests. So you're requesting a waiver of land development, whether it's determined to be a minor or a major. You're requesting a waiver of that and any fees that would typically come along with that. You're agreeing to provide a grading plan and a stormwater management plan. What is your request as far as fees for those?
Please be open to the reasonable fees for your engineer to review. We don't want you to assume the cost for that.
So you'd be open to pay engineering review fees, but you'd, what about the actual permit fee?
You guys own the building.
Yeah, you own the building, that's the way I look at it.
We can waive it, but we need to know what you're requesting.
If you're requesting a fee, I'd like to waive it.
Now, as we get into the project, there obviously are going to be other permits that are required, building permit, HVAC, electrical, plumbing. We, you know, for life safety reasons, we would have to make you submit those permits and follow the guidelines of those permits.
And as we had done in the past, the borough did waive those fees.
Okay, that's correct.
And what we did, so we would assume that, and that's a bad term, I guess, but we would assume that we'd do the same thing.
Okay.
For that. We'd obviously pass muster, but putting another million dollars into your bill would be nice.
And also, we do have that still, that lease arrangement with the borough concerning the mini golf, so we could put money into that as well, which is a criteria for us to get that grant money that changes the law as well. So we're enhancing the popularity, we're enhancing the knowledge of the community to come out, and we're also enhancing the property as well, while we're the tenants for both of those properties. All right? Thank you.
So for the sake of time, I'd like to ask our solicitor, could you prepare a memo for council explaining what the waiver of this fee would entail as far as waiving a minor land development?
Sure, sure, I'll put that together for council to review.
Discussing it all now. If you'll put it in writing, get it out to us, and we'll study that.
Certainly.
Very good. Okay. Under subcommittees, infrastructure, Vice President Kulp.
Yeah, we didn't have too much of a meeting, but Public Works, at the time we had our meeting, Wilson wasn't done yet. I don't know how far that's gotten, but they couldn't do any other jobs until that one was finished. Sewer Works about done, Poplar Street was next. I guess the work on the closed loop is, working on the fiber optics and getting everything to coordinate. Parks and Rec, Memorial Park Phase III is complete. The playground equipment and rubber surfings done, ADA access paths grading to address drainage and paving, fencing for pedestrian and vehicular control. Riverfront Park, ash tree removal is beginning to begin, has begun, and one-third of it's complete for the area along the pathways, and there's five days in December they were working on that. Pollack Park testing is underway, soil samples are collected and monitoring wells installed. First sampling event in December, results will be used to draft the DEP compliant remediation plan. Memorial Park Ball Field Restoration Complete, pending grass growth. Field One's ready for spring, and Field Two may be ready by summer, and that's all I have for that.
Very good. Economic Development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors.
What's new and exciting?
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. Good to be with you this evening, excuse the voice. So I have it on good authority, and I've seen it with my own eyes, that the barrels are full at J.J. Rattigan's Brewing Company on High Street, and they hope to be serving some of that fine brew this weekend. I would encourage you to go to the iPick Pottstown site to read an article, which was written by Page's marketing person. We have a hemp facility, most people don't know it here in the borough because of security reasons. You may remember that there was a group, Agronimed and Agronagricide that came, and they first applied to the Commonwealth for a grow license for medical marijuana. They were not successful in that first bid, they were successful in the second one, unfortunately, it was for Chester County, and their grow facility went to Chester. However, they were really engaged, and they really liked what they saw in Pottstown. So they have brought their hemp processing facility here, and that will employ about 10 full-time positions, and then more people as harvest time goes. It is gone from double-digit farmers growing hemp to over 300 farmers in the Commonwealth having hemp farms production. So we see it as a good community impact, and something that obviously Page is very interested in, as well as I'm sure the borough and you as council members are in, because it is an industry that is having a rebirth and innovation, and it will mean jobs in the future, highly technical jobs. Along with J.J. Rattigan's Brewing Company, I want to talk about all of the fun things. I also want to talk about all of the business owners who have really put their own time and treasure into not only their buildings, but also making High Street look festive. So you may notice that including Part and some of the building owners like Four Elements and Once Upon a Time Consignment, they have been putting Studio 36, they've been adopting the planters, and they, we are having a planter competition, and Madam Mayor will be announcing those winners. She is the final judging. There is a judging panel going out tomorrow at noon, and at the tree lighting, those winners will be announced in three categories. Don't ask me what they are, I've been told four times and I can't remember. So the alley will be having, they've been decorating, there will be a tree going in the alley on Friday, but the real celebration is Saturday, December 7th, 10 to 12, a snacks with Santa at the complex, and then 12 to 2, cookie decorating at Beverly's Pastry Shop. And then we really sort of flipped it, and in addition to Santa coming, we also wanted to have fun for the adults. We are an adult town, we don't have a lot of bookstores and toy stores, so we thought, well, the adults should be encouraged to play as well. So Santa will be arriving by dragon boat on his very own throne, crossing the Schuylkill to Riverfront Park. He will be crossing the Schuylkill starting at 2:00, and be there at 2:15 in Riverfront Park. He will make a stop in the Innovation Center, and then go by fire truck up to the alley. Let's see, what else do we have going on on Saturday? 2:45, Santa arrives at the alley. From 3:00 to 6:30, the official downtown Pottstown holiday stroll, you will be able to pick up your cards either at the terminal, your bingo cards, or down at the Schuylkill River Heritage Place, and they will all be a theme from A Christmas Story. So you will go around and you will be on a scavenger hunt, and you'll visit various businesses that have parts of the movie at their particular location. And then we will all gather, starting at 6:30, you should be making your way to Smith Family Plaza, and that is from 7:00 to 7:30 is the tree lighting. Those announcements will be made about planters, and then those of us that have tickets to A Christmas Story at Still River will enjoy a performance starting at 8:00.
I'm assuming that those are also out, but by any chance, that there are extra tickets available for the play?
I do not know. I went on Still River and got them, and there was still, about a week ago, there was still some there. Certainly Sunday will be a festive day, I don't want to slight the Go Fourth group and holiday tours. I do understand the trolley is sold out, but there are still tickets for the Holiday House tour, and there's a wonderful concert happening at First Baptist. So there's a lot. Happy holidays, everybody. There is much to celebrate in Pottstown with economic development.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Saturday's my birthday, so they doing all this for me.
Transportation, Vice President Kulp.
No meeting.
Okay. Ordnance Review Committee, Counselor Poskett.
No meeting.
Hating. Efficient Methods, Counselor Lewandowski.
No meeting.
Okay. How about the Emergency Services Report? Chief? No meeting, no calls?
Well, we had a couple calls. One of them was a child playing with matches, and we've addressed that, we're working with the county to get some help into that family to address that, which is huge. Reaching out to the county, they said was the first time someone's really reached out in a while for a juvenile fire setter, and we really want to get that message out about that. That was our call that was significant as far as damage, but other than that, we had 79 fire calls, about 358 EMS calls, and the big thing we got going on is December 21st, Santa's coming by fire truck throughout the borough. So anyone that has a Facebook or, you know, I know you've already posted, but we're looking forward to that, that'll be a fun day. I think it starts at 12 and goes full bathroom start. And then the last thing was, we did have our biannual drill for Limerick and all the departments in the borough. Evidently, going to Mike, everybody did a good job, so.
Wonderful.
We'll get our review from the county, just to be honest. Now, I think we did very well from all indications, so that's my report, thank you.
Great, thank you. Human Relations, Ms. Lemigood.
Good evening, councilors, council president, and Madam Mayor. The month of December is full of religious celebrations. We have Hanukkah, Christmas, and Kwanzaa, and December 10th is Human Rights Day. In 1948, the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. It's a document proclaiming the inalienable rights which everyone is entitled to as human beings, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political other opinion, national or social origin, property, birth, or other stats. And the 2019-20 theme is Stand Up for Human Rights with a focus on youth. The December Commission meeting will be held next Tuesday, December 10th, at 6:00 p.m. in Council Chambers, and the Inman from the mosque in Pottstown is scheduled to make a presentation, and all are welcome to attend. And the commission wishes a joyous holiday season to all, and including the closing of the First Baptist in 2019.
Very good. The next two, Land Bank and Library. I have an email from Deb Penrod, she can't be here tonight to give the presentation. Maybe Monday, I don't know.
I mean, I can touch on it. We approved our 2020 meeting dates, we discussed the submission of the PHAR grant, which will help us to acquire six to seven properties over the next two years. The match that's used for that grant is the $20,000 that the borough has set aside as seed money, so that definitely was helpful in being able to make the application for that grant. And they hope to make their first acquisition next year. So at this point, they're getting their website in order and starting to work on policies for qualifying interested developers. The way that it'll work is by law, the properties that are going to be available through the Land Bank have to be posted onto the website. So as soon as we have the website up and running, and we have the criteria established for qualified developers, we'll let you know so that people can start looking at properties.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Frickett Center, Counselor Frickett.
First, I'd like to give kudos to the local volunteers who's working there, because I guess at this point, you know, all of this is basically out of the picture, or they're virtually invisible at this point. And the local volunteers are pretty much there every day, you know, holding down the fort and making sure that the kids have something to do, and making sure these programs are still being done. So I'd like to give the... done. So I like to give the, the local volunteers credit uh, for what, for what they're doing there on a daily basis. Um, uh, I know they, they, they are continuing the after-school homework program. Uh, they're also, uh, the karate program, the soccer program is still active um, uh, at, at the borough or at the um, Ricket Center. Um, this Friday and Saturday, uh, volunteers, children, uh, and the, and the volunteers will be uh, helping the Sunnybrook with their Christmas gift giveaway program. They'll be packing bags and things like that. So um, um, this is not verified, but I understand. And is Lydia here from, okay. Um, I understand that maybe y- you can verify this. Cleaning and painting the first two weeks of next, yeah. So if you want to speak on that, if you want to, anything else you'd like to put out there? Appreciate that.
Sure. So I did have a few updates. Thank you for having me this evening. Um, so we do know that we're planning on having this center open seven days a week with a focus on after-school weekends, um, days when schools are closed and summertime, all being very important times to offer the high-quality calendar of programs and activities that we're looking forward to offering. Um, you know, we know our programs will be engaging, well-structured and responsive to the needs of the community, families and youth. Um, right now, we're in the process of um, hiring exceptional staff to, and also engaging high-quality instructors. So we do have positions posted on Indeed. Um, if anybody's interested in taking a look at those, I, I would love that. We are starting to do interviews next week for the positions.
I believe there's some staffers here today, so if you.
Great.
I'd love for you to talk to them.
Great. So we have the Center Director, Program Coordinators and Center Receptionists for staffing, but we also look forward to contracting high-qualified um, instructors to be able to lead classes as well. We do have, um, we have had contractors and our facilities manager walk through the building and we look forward to making improvements to the building specifically around safety and security, um, as well as some aesthetic updates to the building like paint, ceiling tiles and flooring. Um, we anticipate this will need to be done in phases, but we're looking at the first two weeks of the year to do some of the painting and different things like that that we can get done in a really quick turnaround time. Um, and then with more improvements to come in the future where we could do it um, sections at a time. Um, so again, we do anticipate that we'll probably be closed the first two weeks of January to do some of those renovations. We also will need to install computers, copiers, phone system, tables, chairs, refrigerators and program supplies and equipment at that time. Um, we are a volunteer-led organization, so we're looking forward to engaging volunteers in many ways. Currently, to offer our existing programs, we have over six hundred volunteers that make our programs possible and we're looking forward to engaging more volunteers. We do have a volunteer coordinator and um, so we do an application process for our volunteers that includes a basic background check, um, as well as a tour and information. Um, and then our volunteer coordinator generally matches volunteers up with their skillset to what makes sense for their volunteer opportunities. Um, we're also looking at a key card check-in system similar to like what the YMCA or other gyms would have where when you come into the building, you scan in. So that will be really helpful in allowing us to ensure the safety of everyone in the building as well as track program participation to be able to offer information and data around who's using the building and how often and frequently and for what programs. Um, that will also allow us to make sure we're offering responsive programming. If something is being offered that's not being well-attended, we can replace it with something else that would be appealing to the community. Um, as always, collaboration is very important to us and critical to our program success. So we're looking forward and I have um, had some great conversations with community organizations and churches and we're looking forward to working together to serve the community. Um, a big thing for me is that I don't want to see us repeat services. I don't want to see us spend time and energy on offering services that are already available in the community. I would rather us be really good stewards of connecting people to the existing services in the community and helping to fill gaps and needs. So um, things like, you know, if someone's having issues with hunger, we're connecting them with the local food pantries, um, and working with the churches to serve, serve the community really well. Um, I do see this as um, a learning process. So we want to be responsive to the community. So what we might be offering, um, will continue to grow and change as we learn more about what the community would like to see in the building.
Good.
Um, thank you very much for allowing me to provide this day.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. That was my, my report. Thank you.
Okay. Well, uh, with all of the groups and individuals that came forward to talk, express their thoughts and volunteer to help, all that interest through the summer and now, I hope at least half of it comes to fruition. So, anybody interested in helping, uh, they were, welcome you. Absolutely welcome you. Uh, next, Pottstown School District. Counselor Lindsay, anything for us?
Yes. Um, so I went to the school board meeting and they had a presentation um, with the students when they went to Paris. And if y'all remember last year, that around this time I was in Perry, but I'm here with you guys. It's even better. Anyway, they had a presentation with the Paris and London and um, it was nice. And you know, they put a little educational um, twist into it. And they also had a swearing-in for the students that were, that's going to be on the school board. And um, on the, on December fifth, the, at seven o'clock, the new school board members will be swearing in. Okay?
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, your report.
All right. So towards the end of November, we had our Rotary Performing Arts Scholarship Competition um, at the Hill School. And I want to congratulate all the kids who performed. It was pretty amazing. I think our youngest was an eighth grader and she played the harp. Um, it was, it was wonderful. If you haven't gone, it's a free event and it's like, it's a concert. So next year, come out and enjoy the students um, in our area. Um, I also met with Jerry Gorski, who's engineer slash builder of Sly Fox. Um, and I met with him and the county commissioners at the Stone School, um, which is another building that he's renovated. Um, he does a lot of uh, work on municipal buildings and um, he gave a very generous donation to the Pottstown Cluster and thanks to Representative Cerisi threw in um, in addition to his prize, threw in lunch with me. So I was able to fulfill that. Um, and we had a meeting with Pottstown Community Action, Hobarts Run, the Housing Coalition and uh, Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation to discuss collaboration on the Love Your Block Program. So I think everyone's interested and hopefully um, beginning of, uh, towards the end of the year, beginning of next year, we can work on uh, splitting out pieces uh, for those organizations to um, start working on. And, oh, Jim and Sue's High Street Steaks opened at the Terminal. I have to say, pretty, pretty awesome steaks. Trinita and I went. Um, I meant to take a picture of mine, but all that was left was the pepper.
Me too, I forgot.
Sorry.
I ate it.
Um, and on that night, Trinita and I discovered, and I know um, Peggy talks about it, but I don't know why we've never been there.
We missed it.
Um, the Cosmic Art Studios.
Yeah.
We just walked in. They were having a psychedelic.
It was amazing.
Um, it is so amazing in there and every Thursday, they have um, community, family art, um, art night every Thursday at seven P.M. and they accept donations. So they're all by donation. There, it's, you can get.
Jewelry.
Teas and jewelry and look at beautiful art. It's really, really neat. So I highly suggest if you haven't been there, it is in, what is that?
What's the dance, the dance studio thing?
Where the badminton Smashville building is.
It's right on top. Right next to the Terminal.
Yeah, right next to Terminal, yeah.
Yeah.
Next to the church.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a church. It is. Yeah, it's right there, right there.
All right. So that, that was.
We had fun.
Yeah, we did. That was November. Um, now we're in December. We had our Community Leaders Breakfast Meeting um, today at the Pottstown Integrated Wellness Complex, AKA the YMCA. So thank you Chuck Galati. Um, thank you Peggy because she's already gone through this list for Saturday.
Yeah.
We will all be spending from ten A.M. to ten P.M. downtown with Trinita for her birthday. Um.
You're all welcome.
With snacks and tree lightings and all sorts of things. So I don't need to go into that. Oh, and also on Saturday, um, from four to seven is the spaghetti dinner for the Cub Scout Pack One Forty-Six at seven fifty North Evans Street. Nine dollars for adults, eight for seniors, six for kids. If you would like more information, you can go speak to Mr. Rose. Um, Saturday, December fourteenth, from ten to one is the Children's Holiday Party at Sunnybrook. Um, I know you've all seen this flyer, the Children's Holiday Project. Um, there are trees all over town, although I am not sure if they have all been uh, taken. But there are angel trees all over town with cards on them for families um, so that you can select to um, select a card to get a family a gift and donations for um, for food boxes. And I'd also like to, I'd like to thank everyone who's, who's put effort into this. This has grown tremendously. Um, I'd also like to thank um, the Pottstown Rotary Club who last minute has um, stepped up and picked up all the Ricket Center uh, families and kids to make sure that they are also included in this. So that is at Sunnybrook again from ten to one on the fourteenth. Sunday, the fifteenth, from four-thirty to six-thirty, Joe Cerisi's uh, campaign kickoff will be at the Community Music School at seven-seven-five West Main Street and Trap. The only reason I am mentioning it is because you see Mr. Cerisi in Pottstown, in the borough, all the time. Um, he's been a tremendous asset to our borough and I believe he will be singing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think it's worth going. Um, I'm also, we'll be meeting with Mike Bowman from Valley Forge Tourism later this month to discuss some uh, economic opportunities in the borough. Um, save the date. Oh, don't forget, weather permitting, January first is our annual polar bear plunge. And I expect to see everyone up here.
Oh, I don't do.
Oh, yeah.
I don't do cold water. I, I don't. TV.
No, no.
Watch on TV.
Please come out. It is a tradition. We all dress up in costumes, tutus, whatever you like. Um, some members of our community wear speedos. It's interesting. Um.
Uh, okay.
I would not be partaking in the.
I'm with.
No, but you weren't.
I did the tutu.
You did rock the tutu last year. It was pretty awesome.
I have pictures.
Um, also, and now one more save the date is Saturday, February twenty-ninth, um, is the Luncheon and Susical, the Musical Gala at Pottstown High School from uh, lunch starts at twelve and the musical starts at two. Um, I want to say thank you to Rupert Elementary's third graders for the fabulous thank you cards that they sent um, me when they came and did their uh, tour of the borough and the police department and Judge Palladino. Um, it really cheered me up. I opened them uh, while I was uh, on a layover in Phoenix and uh, it was nice having a part of Pottstown with me while I was not here for the holidays.
I got four cards. You got like twenty.
I.
Yeah, she had a lot.
Got more than that.
Yeah.
But your name was mentioned in a lot of them.
That was nice, see Ryan.
I remember who gives them their art grade, I guess.
Um, oh, and I learned today that Robert Teller's Okinawan Karate Academy at the Complex, AKA the YMCA, from Monday through Thursday, has evening classes um, for karate kids, teens and adults. For more information, I have a flyer up here if you are interested or you can go to, uh, oh, I can't read. Oh, my goodness. Facebook, Robert, Teller's, OKA. So it's, yes. Or I have a flyer up here or see Levi Wolf. And I think that's it.
Oh, because.
And if I missed anything, which I'm sure I did, listen. Check Facebook, check Trinita's Facebook, check Dawn's Facebook, check I Pick Pottstown's website, check Go Forth's website, check the borough's website. That's it.
Okay. How about a manager's report?
All right. Well, I'll keep it pretty short since uh, mostly everybody covered a lot of the things that I was going to mention anyway. So I'll give some of the more um, managerial updates. Update on trash tote delivery. They have begun this week. So if you recall, under our new contract with Mascaro, we're getting new dark gray totes that'll better blend in to the, to the surrounding uh, environment. Um, driving down Adam Street this morning, I hardly even noticed them. Um, just a couple items on that. They will be delivered to, to your uh, property address, which is typically the front of your house. However, if your regular trash location is in the rear, you will need to move that tote to the rear um, so that it's picked up at your normal trash location. And um, also uh, we, we've received a couple reports that some of the totes are, are, are a little um, mis- misformed and this is because they were stacked and shipped uh, over a long uh, period of time. So uh, we are told that they will come back to form when the weather heats up. So we would just ask that if your lid isn't closing all the way to kind of hold off for a couple months, but if it, if in the springtime comes and it's not closing, let us know and we can figure out how to, how to get a replacement out there. And then also just another reminder, starting January first, one bulk item per property per week will be picked up.
Justin, is that in addition to the other two totes that we have or they be picking one of them up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have mentioned that.
I was more.
The red totes will be picked up by Mascaro and taken, and taken away. I don't know when that will occur. It seems like it's not occurring on the same day that the gray totes are delivered, but I would expect that next time they empty your red tote shortly thereafter, that they would um, come and take it away.
So continue to put the red tote out with trash until.
Until.
Take it away.
Yes.
But for right now, they, they both are there.
So don't, don't put trash in the gray one until they take the red one away.
Stop using the gray one right away. They will be following up on trash days trying to cover most of it.
Okay.
Yes.
They're in the process of taking the reds out now, but certainly once they move back in the orders or wherever they go, uh, they're not going to get them. So.
Yeah.
They need to be found in the trash today. The, the guys who are picking up the reds can't keep up with the guys who are putting grays out.
Sure.
They go a lot faster.
All right.
All right. So, so yeah, don't put anything in the reds or else it's going to make it harder for them to pick it up when they do come to pick it up.
So we need to take the trash out that's in there now?
See later, break?
Yep. No. Yep.
Yeah.
And clean out the trash can while you're at it.
No, you don't, you don't have to do that.
I've just messed one up.
And please remember, you know, it's a good idea to put your property address on the new tote and also record your serial number so that if it's ever misplaced, you'll have an easier time of trying to track it down. Next is um, parking permits. Um, we're going to be hopefully um, presenting a idea to, to council for the parking permits uh, next month, but um, in the interim, uh, we are going to start to uh, roll out a, a new parking permitting system. It really doesn't um, change the old system too much. Previously for on-street parking permits, we had a blue zone and a green zone. Um, those zones are going to remain the same. The rates are going to remain the same in those zones. Um, however, in the green zone in the downtown, we did add um, a business employee on-street parking permit. Um, the price of that is previously what the lot permits were at, I think, three hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. However, um, we really want to discourage long-term parkers like businesses and residents from parking in the downtown. So that's why that fee is so high. So we've also come up with a reduced fee for a hundred and fifty dollars a year. You can park in any one of the um, borough-owned lots, number one through six. They're also available on a monthly or a quarterly time basis as well. These permits are open to anyone, whether you're a resident, resident, business, visitor, doesn't matter if you live in the borough. Um, anyone can buy the lot permits. Um, so please uh, take advantage of that because that, that is a new change from, from before and basically was in response to some of the business owners downtown that wanted a um, more re- And basically, it was in response to some of the business owners downtown that wanted a, um, more reasonable, um, way to be able to pay for their employee parking.
And, um, you said half a year is, what was the price this again? I'm sorry. What did you say?
It's, um.
Quarter?
It's fifteen dollars a month, forty dollars a quarter. And, um, I don't, I don't have the six month, but a hundred and fifty dollar a year.
Okay. Year. Okay.
And then also, the, um, the part routes are going to be changing for our public bus system. There, we had a presentation several months ago. Those route changes are expected to go into effect on January second. So new, um, schedules and new maps, uh, are out soon. So please, um, go visit the website and pick them up and familiarize yourself with the new routes. Tomorrow, I'll be joining with, um, the superintendent at, uh, Pottstown to participate in a press conference regarding the, um, negative impacts of economic development when you don't have fairly funded schools. Um, so we're participating, um, on, within that press conference with, uh, several other, uh, school districts that are in similar, uh, situations that, that we are. So just another way that we're working together. And then, uh, keep your, uh, your eyes out, uh, February, March timeframe. We are targeting a joint meeting with the school district. That's it.
Very good. And now, on to newer business. Ricketts Center lease agreement. Mr. Lenhart.
Me too. Thank you.
Okay, I know that, uh, there's a lot yet on the agenda for tonight, so I do wanna try to keep this, uh, brief, but I also wanna make sure that I don't shortchange, uh, any of the summary I'm gonna give of the features for this agreement. That's what I'm gonna give to you now. Uh, you should all have a copy in your packets, so you can follow along. I'd invite you to do so. The idea here is to give you a full picture of, uh, what the agreement is that's been negotiated, so you have a full understanding of it. So decision can be made on it, uh, promptly to ensure that things move along, uh, on a timeframe that gives us, uh, an opportunity to get things running promptly in 2020. So this is a new agreement, uh, keep in mind. Uh, previous agreements you've discussed, those are gone. This is derivative of the RFQ, uh, so that, that's what we've been referencing and putting this together. So moving swiftly through this, uh, we have the preamble. You can sort of go through that. It's got your usual pieces. But moving on to section one, there's the term. Uh, the term is two years, beginning January first, 2020. Uh, it does provide for one additional two-year term renewal. And that, uh, if you look, um, references paragraph eleven, provision set forth in that is subject to approval of council. Uh, so you'll have opportunity to approve the renewal process in two years. A little different from the previous one. Uh, section two, administration. This is where we talk about, uh, the guidelines for operation in references in two point one, Exhibit A. Exhibit A is the RFQ. So if you look at your RFQ, it sets the standard for what we want operations to be. Um, and in part A of that, it says, uh, operates on a year-round basis, and then defines a minimum for serving community youth, a minimum thirty-eight hours weekly, including operations on Saturdays and Sundays. We already have the habit from Lydia that that is part of their plan, uh, but just so you know, that is included in this agreement for what the expectation is for operations. BMS, uh, that's Port Town Multi Service agrees to administer operating, maintain center with its own resources. Um, next important feature is section two-three. It talks about, uh, establishing a community advisory board. This is something that, uh, BMS and the borough talked about jointly, something we wanna do. Obviously, that's gonna incorporate folks from the community. Um, an advisory board like that, what we're asking for is that, uh, the borough have two appointees on there, and from there on out, um, the members of that board would be comprised of, um, representatives, uh, from the residential community, um, Pottstown local organizations, and organizations as recommended by, uh, the borough or BMS. Ultimately, BMS, uh, is gonna choose that advisory board, with the exception of those two individuals. We're saying it's gonna be appointed, uh, the idea being that there can be a staff person and a council person. That will be, uh, up to you to decide. Let's move along here to three, organization. No big surprises there. Uh, the expectation is BMS is going to set rules. There'll be a review process with us. We're going to agree on them mutually, but obviously, it's their show to run. That's part of their response to the RFQ and moving forward. Moving on to section four, finances. Uh, we are maintaining, uh, the, uh, borough contribution of forty thousand dollars. Uh, we do feel that that's important to make sure that, uh, we are invested in the operation of that center, uh, for the citizens of this community. Uh, it's going to be a team effort, and that's what's important, uh, you'll see with this agreement, with working, going forward, and also with that contribution. Note at the end of section four, two additional funds that are contributed by third parties specifically for the center may only be utilized for the center and the programming of the center. That is addressed directly, and that's relatives, two gifts that are earmarked for that. Maintaining finances, uh, we're asking BMS, uh, to maintain, uh, financial reports, that we have access to them, so that at any given time, we can have a picture of, of the finances. I know that's a question that we get asked often. Um, how are you ensuring that things are being run appropriately? We have provisions for that information to be gathered, uh, both in section four and also through the community advisory board. This inroads there. So that is addressed in section four. Similarly, uh, requesting a copy of, uh, the organization BMS's audit annually. They get that anyway. Um, so they've agreed to provide us a copy of it, so that, you know, we know what their standings are. Uh, section five, there's nothing I really wanna highlight in terms of features there. Section six, uh, facilities. You could see there, it outlines, uh, who's responsible for what with respect to the center. There's nothing that much changes for that. We're still, um, mostly giving operations and maintenance over to, uh, Boyer Town Multi Service in this case, and we maintain responsibility, uh, for the primary structure, as would any landlord. And really, that is it for the features I wanted to update with the exceptional last one being section seven. If you go to seven-two, uh, we did maintain the structure where a monthly report of activities and events should be prepared, so that that is a feature of, uh, the ongoing committee of the whole meeting, so we can keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on in the, the Ricketts Center. Otherwise, from there, you have, uh, your information on what the stand, information, rather, on what the insurance requirements, uh, we're asking for, and then, uh, your standard indemnifying clauses in section nine. So that, uh, those are the primary features of this. Uh, if you have any questions, this would be a good time. I think I'm very satisfied with the relationship, um, that, uh, I see blooming with Boyer Town Multi Service unit. I think there's good things ahead, uh, with respect to operation of that center and how it could do an outreach, uh, to reach a greater part of the community.
Yeah, I think, I think Michael really hit it on the head. You know, this is gonna be a, a collaborative approach, um, especially at first, because we wanna make sure, uh, that, that Boyer Town Multi Service is, is really, um, speaking with the people that they need to speak to in this community, um, and really engaging, uh, with the community. So while, while, you know, truly, um, this is gonna be their center to run. You know, we heard the community loud, loud and clear that there needs to be, um, more, uh, more of a, a role for the borough. And, you know, I, and Michael and I have discussed that in length, and, you know, we are gonna be much more involved going forward than we have been before. But, you know, make no mistake, Boyer Town Multi Service is the organization that does, does run the center. But we have, uh, experienced so far a very collaborative relationship. And I think our main focus at first is going to be to, um, again, uh, get this steering committee, uh, going, um, and, um, make sure we have all the right voices, um, in, in the room, so that we can really start to talk about how we make this center everybody's center.
No further questions? Uh, we'll list this for action on Monday evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eleven, ordinance, chapter eighteen, local limit study evaluation.
All right, so we're requesting advertisement of this ordinance in accordance with EPA guidelines to address changes to local pollution limits, uh, mainly as they apply to industrial users sending wastewater to our wastewater treatment plant. In the fall of two thousand seventeen, a local limit study was conducted in the borough. Uh, because surrounding townships send, uh, their sewage to be treated at, at our plant, uh, this study also included lower, upper, and west Potts Grove townships in accordance with the MPDS permit issued, um, to the borough of Pottstown. After much communication with EPA and analysis of the local limit study results, the EPA is recommending that the current local limits remain unchanged. However, they are recommending that new limits for moly bednum and selenium are added. The local limits have been developed and accepted by both EPA and the Pottstown Wastewater Treatment Plant. And the borough and the surrounding townships within the next four months are, are required to, uh, adopt the local limits into ordinance. So this advertisement that we're requesting would begin the thirty-day, um, public comment period. And we're also working closely with the contributing townships to help them update their ordinance in accordance with these, um, guidelines as well.
Okay. Very good. We'll list that for Monday. Twelve is maintenance hangar temporary leasing assignment.
Yeah, so the current lease that, uh, uh, we have for the maintenance, uh, hangar, uh, at the airport is with, uh, Fly Elite. And, uh, that lease is set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. At this point, we're seeking council approval for a temporary lease assignment to a different entity, Dave Pasquale of Pasquale Aviation, who currently subleases a portion, a portion of the maintenance hangar from the fixed base operator, Fly Elite. Mr. Pasquale has been operating a successful airplane maintenance business in this location for several years, and his business has now grown to the point that he now needs the full area of the maintenance hangar to continue these operations. The lease would allow the borough to be in full compliance with FAA and BOA funding, uh, which requires the entirety of this space to be used for aircraft maintenance purposes only. All conditions of the current lease with Fly Elite would be retained and transferred to Pasquale Aviation. And as this, this new assignment indicates, this lease would be temporary, uh, for a period of twelve months. However, uh, the agreement does mandate that, um, the parties work in good faith to establish a long-term lease that we can present for council's consideration.
Okay. If I can summarize it, uh, council needs to understand the tenant is not changing. Uh, it'll be the same party that's leasing, but they will be leasing directly from the borough, not through Fly Elite.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, right now, I mean, one of the tenants is changing. Um, Fly Elite, um, currently, uh, subleases only a portion of the hangar to, um, Pasquale Aviation.
Well, okay.
So, but yeah, one of the tenants will not change. One, one of the, the tenants will move back.
And Pasquale, he's, he's gonna take over the whole unit.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
And instead of subleasing, lease directly from the borough.
Right. If there's no question, we'll list this for action. Uh, twelve, thirteen, cable franchise agreement. Just that time.
Our, our current, um, franchise agreement with, with Comcast is, is set to expire in March of two thousand and twenty. Um, per the FCC regulations, municipalities are permitted to receive franchise fees to allow cable broadcasts within their community. And, um, just to be clear, 'cause we've gotten some questions about this before, the franchise agreement is not exclusive to Comcast. Other providers are free to negotiate separate franchise agreements, uh, with, with the borough. Um, however, for reasons unknown, we have not been approached by any other cable providers, um, for a franchise. Uh, if you recall, several years back, we were in discussions, uh, with Verizon as well for a franchise. However, at that time, they determined they were not interested. And, you know, I can't really point to why, but it would seem that many of the other providers right now are focusing on building fiber and internet infrastructure, uh, which coincides with the technological shift to more streaming video services. So at this point, we're not asking council to take any action, um, on, on the agreement that you have in front of you. Uh, but we wanted to update you on the current status of our negotiations with Comcast, so that we're in a good position come March, when we're ready to, um, sign a new agreement, and to make sure that we're on the right track with council. So one of the changes since the last time of our, we signed this agreement was FCC Order six-twenty-one, uh, which was issued sometime, sometime in two thousand and sixteen. And among other things, it, it sets a cap on the annual franchise fee at five percent. The order also sets auditing requirements for the technology grants received from Comcast to ensure that equipment purchased with these monies are used strictly for audio and video, um, purposes. Therefore, um, generally, the order limits some of the items that we could realistically, uh, negotiate. So at your desk tonight, you have a redlined draft of the agreement currently. And, uh, just to briefly summarize what's in there, um, so far are the following. A ten-year term. Uh, we feel that due to all the changes, uh, right now with technology and the industry in general, that it would be in our best interest to go with a longer, um, term to lock in the, the franchise for a longer period of time. And, uh, we would, uh, also ask that we get the maximum five percent, uh, franchise fee, which in two thousand and nineteen was, in two thousand and nineteen, we don't have the, the fourth quarter in yet, but it's estimated to be three hundred and ninety thousand, or just a little, little bit under that. The agreement would also, uh, propose to remove one, one PCTV channel, channel ninety-eight, uh, leaving PCTV with the remaining two channels. The removal of, uh, free cable service to Borough Hall and, and the school district buildings that we have under our current agreement, uh, would be removed. Uh, we don't use those cable connections here, and I was in, uh, I did run this by the superintendent at, at the school district, and he's kind of in the same boat that we are, in that they don't really use them that much, and that, um, there are other options available, um, to them. So he was okay with us, uh, taking that out. We're also requesting a technology grant. Um, there's two parts to this agreement, the, the franchise fee and the technology grant. So we're requesting a technology grant in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. That would be a one-time grant over the course of the ten years, which would be used to pay for upgrades to audio and video technology in the council meeting room, and council chambers, such as projectors, automatic screens, voice recording upgrades, a video conference setup in council chambers, LCD monitors, uh, for uses message boards in the Borough Hall lobbies, as well as wireless connectivity for presenters. Approximately fifteen thousand dollars of that grant will be used to pay for an extension of a return line to the Potts Grove High School to accommodate the relocation of PCTV, which occurred last month. So if you recall, PCTV, um, which we, um, have an agreement with to run the channels, uh, was, it was running out of Potts Grove, or I'm sorry, Pottstown High School. Uh, they had apparently come up with some space constraints, and, um, PCTV decided to relocate out to, uh, Potts Grove High School. So there was a cost incurred for that fiber extension. However, it is going to be covered by Comcast through the technology grant. I believe so.
Okay, so that's the summary, and we need, take no action till March?
Um, February or March.
Okay. Very good. How about the PPOA contract?
All right.
Thank you all. You, you can come back Monday for part two. All right, this has to do with the police contract.
Yeah, so I'm thrilled to announce that, uh, the PPOA has executed their CBA contract, which we've been in negotiations for in the past six months. Some highlights of the contract are as follows. This will be a five-year contract. It'll be the creation of one additional step in the pay grade sequence, which increases the amount of time, uh, for an officer to reach the full pay grade. Renaming the healthcare plans will also occur as a part of this contract, um, so that we can give them more of a generic, uh, name, so that the borough has more of an ability to negotiate with other providers in the future that would provide the same healthcare benefits. with other providers in the future that would provide the same healthcare benefits. The elimination of post-retirement medical care for officers hired after 2020. As you know, this is, currently is over a $20 million liability for the borough that will be able to slowly start taking off of our books over the next couple decades. Just a reminder, existing officers will still receive this benefit. This just applies to new officers hired after 2020, I should say, after January 1st, 2020. For health insurance, those with, with spouses that are able to obtain health insurance elsewhere, the borough would offer an incentive payment of up to $5,000 of their current healthcare premium if they take their spouse's insurance through another entity. In exchange for all of this, we're offering salary increases of 4% in 2020, 4% in 2021, 4% in 2022.
3.5.
I'm sorry. 3.5% in, in 2022.
Yeah, it's four, 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 three and a half, three.
And 3% for the last year.
Yeah, that's, that's what I had, so 4% 2020 through 2022, 3.5% in 2023, and 3% in 2024, which would conclude the contract. We also removed the residency requirement from this contract, which, which was important to recruitment and attracting top talent. And there are no changes to the current healthcare premium contributions. So that isn't everything, but those are the big picture highlights, and if I missed anything, feel free to chime in. So I think, again, I mean, you know, we, we really worked hard to, to get to a, a place that both were, were comfortable with. We took, as we did with the ASME union, we took a longer-term approach to this. You know, we're paying a little more upfront, but over the long term, that $20 million liability that we have over our head will start to dwindle and put us in a better position going forward.
Okay. Evening. They did sign this afternoon, correct?
They did sign this afternoon.
All right.
So it's just awaiting council signature.
Fifteen, license fee for amusement devices. A keyword check.
I can, I can, I can start with that.
Okay.
Currently, we have licensing fees of, I think, $25 for, for any, any amusement machine in, in the borough. We're also experiencing an uptick on some of the gambling machines in, in the convenience stores as well, which we're not sure is accounted for under our, our current licensing requirements for, for amusement machines. There's some thought that the ordinance that we have now is a bit, for amusement machines, is a bit antiquated, you know, especially when it's kind of really a ancillary use at a, at a cafe or, or a coffee shop where, you know, they're providing the claw bars for the kids. We talk about being more business-friendly and trying to do things to just improve our, our image a little bit. And from the feedback I've been getting from the business owners and from paid, this, this vending machine license is just one of those really little things, and we only make about $3,000 in revenue off of it a year, but it's one of the little things that really just gets under people's skin and kind of just, just rubs them, rubs them the wrong way. So I think we should take a close look at whether we need that, and also, on the flip side, whether or not we need to more closely regulate these, these gambling machines. So Dan, I don't know if you had anything else additional to offer to that.
No, I, I would add that since it is an existing ordinance, it needs to be enforced. And...
We talked about it briefly in ad hoc, in ordinance review, so if you want to...
Yeah, and the numbers I remember was that our net revenue was about $8,500.
Yeah, but it was more like eight, eight to $10,000.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly.
The other thing is there's, what I've been told, at least, I didn't count them myself, that there's a tremendous increase in gambling-type machines that have come to the borough. And it could become something significant to our revenue stream. So we can all read through this and see what your thoughts are on Monday.
So I guess the end, the, the goal here would be to provide the solicitor with, with direction to take a look at this.
Right, on Monday.
So you're saying it was 80, was that fair?
I heard it was close to eight to $10,000.
And that's for, and that's for the, the gambling machines?
To buy them or the revenue?
Not the revenue.
This is for all coin, all coin-operated vending machines, the licenses, they're 20, I think they're $25, is that correct?
They're all different.
They're all different? Okay.
So we have coin vending and amusement licenses and music box, but I don't know exactly how.
Okay, so I mean, some of these things are kind of antiquated, but definitely think it's, warrants taking a look at it.
Yeah, I, I, the, the growth that I've seen stopping by various places, I mean, you know, it's, it's only going to get more and more over time. I mean, you know, people pull, pull up gas stations and there for hours on these machines. So, yeah, maybe something we need looking to.
You've seen that as well.
The current regulations on the books have not been looked at or updated in probably more than 20 years. If you read some of the things that we attempt to regulate, you know, they're kind of antiquated, out of date, maybe don't even exist anymore, and there's been certainly inundation of new types of machines that probably aren't specifically recognized in our current ordinance. So I think you need to make a decision as to whether you want to include those things and how you want to expand them, to the extent they're not regulated by the state or some other entity. So this is your opportunity to take a look and see what you want to do as far as make changes. Now would be the time to at least look at it.
Okay, so we can hear more comment on Monday evening. We won't be taking any action other than to advise the solicitor at that time to go forward. Okay, 16, Reading Gravity Racing Soapbox Race.
Yes, so they're requesting a race on Wilson Street, starting at North State Street and ending at Farmington Avenue. And the dates they plan to do this are 5/24, 6/21, 9/6, and 10/11/2020. They also have rain dates of 5/31, 6/28, 9/13, and 10/18. This would occur between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And the entity is Reading Gravity Racing League.
Okay. And they've been here before? All right, we'll list that for Monday evening. Year-end items. Monday evening, we need to adopt a 2020 proposed budget. You have the latest figures before you. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah.
Latest changes, reductions?
Yeah, yeah, I can go over some of the latest changes. So the good news is that we, we were able to get the budget down to 3.83% for total mills of 13.161. As, if you recall, we had previously presented to council a budget of 4.26%. So we had a couple of things that helped, that contributed to this, this coming down. The main driver of that was the healthcare costs, which reduced $216,000 from this. We are previously budgeting about a 7% increase in healthcare, and we're now budgeting a 0% increase in healthcare for this year. So we're doing, we're doing good with the improvements that we're making on our healthcare side to contain costs. We also were informed that the police will be receiving new revenue for a police DEA task for, task force grant and also an FBI task force grant, both totaling $36,000. So that's new revenue there. We'll also be applying for a park strategic plan grant, and that's a $20,000 change. One of the increases to the budget was for a, a paid internship. We, we had a little more discussion on that, and what we, what we really need there is a, is a paid administrative intern. So we'd like to increase the salary for that to, to $30,000. Again, this would be an internship position that would probably start sometime late in the, in the first quarter. Last increase that we had, dental insurance increased from $9,900 per month to $10,500 per month. So those were the big changes since we presented the budget last time.
Okay. So if there are no questions at this time, we'll list that for approval Monday evening?
Correct.
Yep.
That's, that's the other meeting.
What's our continuing assessment situation? Is it still, is it still declining? Was it leveling off? What was that situation?
Unfortunately, it's still declining. At the beginning of the year, it was looking good. It was looking like we were going to be level. Unfortunately, at the end of the year, we, we got hit with a lot of assessments, and I forget the amount, the value amount that it brought, brought us down. Oh, we lost 1.648 million in assessments, which equated to a, a loss in revenue of about $67,000. So that's like one position, if you want to think about it that way. However, there, it seems like the attorneys that are, that are sending letters out to everyone, encouraging them to go for a reassessment, are really kind of churning through the last of...
And politicians are doing it, too.
I don't know about that.
Yeah.
It seems like they're really, kind of, really at the, at the bottom of the barrel. They're not catching as many fish, or they're not catching as many big fish, but they're catching more little fish and throwing them in, into the barrel. So that's kind of the best way to explain it. They're, they're doing a volume business right now. So the silver lining in that is that the, the assessment reductions that we're seeing are for far less of an amount than what we've been seeing before.
So I just wanted to clarify that 1.6 million was just from the October and November.
Okay.
The whole year has been close to, to over 2 million, because we started at 760 million and now to 760, FBI and URA too.
All right. So we're cautiously optimistic that this, this could start to level if we have a good year, property value-wise, next, next year, but that's a big if. Main thing is, is that we need to keep the pedal to the metal on economic development.
Yep.
Also for Monday, we'll need to adopt an ordinance to fix the tax rate based on the latest information. See, will be an amendment for a fee resolution. I mean, I think there's a copy of that in your pack.
Mm-hmm. The, the changes to the parking permit fees is missing from that draft, but I just went over it tonight.
You did.
So...
As you were saying, I realized...
Yeah, so we will include that on the list for Monday.
Yep. Now, as far as the, the fee resolution, we did address this in our finance meeting earlier today. And looking through it, this was not a, a quick, apply some factor to last year's rates. When I asked the question about how it was developed, each department got to examine the cost of performing those duties, and the fees were adjusted upward or downward accordingly. So it isn't that they just went through and said, I will raise everything 10%. It's all based on actual cost. It's not that the borough makes money on it, it's just recovering our own costs. So we list that for Monday evening, and then the 2020 council meeting scheduled. Jenny will provide us with that. She'll tell us to agree. All right, upcoming board vacancies for next year, the Blighted Property Review Committee, there's one for, for one-year terms. Construction Code Board of Appeals, an alternate Historic Architectural Review Board, one vacancy. There's one application from Julie Marburger.
No.
Oh, that's her resignation. Oh, okay. So we need someone there.
So there's one, there's one opening on, on the hall.
One there. Planning Commission, one four-year term. Pottstown Borough Authority, one five-year term. And...
And we have two applicants for the Borough Authority, Carol Kopp and Michael Benner, who is currently an authority member.
Okay. We need one for the vacancy board and one three-year term for zoning hearing board. Okay. How about comments from the citizens present? Okay, and a reminder to those who want to address council, there is a three-minute time limit.
Ed Kelly, please.
My name is Ed Kelly. I live down on Parkport, right off of Roland Street. And when the powers-to-be decide to put the bike lanes in, we were assured by whoever the bike lane committee was that they would maintain the bike lanes, winter, summer, spring, fall, whatever. Well, this is the most recent evidence of their lack of attention to the bike lanes. Roland Street used to be a nice residential street. It's now, these things are like scattered all over the place. On occasion, when I'm driving either across Jackson or down Jackson to Roland, even south Roland Street, these things kind of like lay on the street randomly. I pick them up, throw them in my car. I don't know what to do with them, so, but if they're not mine, they belong to the borough. And they're an eyesore. I know for a fact that Public Works doesn't like the bike lanes. Police Department doesn't like, doesn't like the bike lanes. The Scarra Track, or Trash, doesn't like the bike lanes. The mailmen go inside the bike lanes to deliver. Some contractors park their cars or their trucks inside the bike lanes because they need to gain access to somebody's driveway if they're, if they can't get into the driveway.
Sure.
So I'm not sure what the point is, the bike lanes. Well, I kind of get the idea what the point is, but no one uses them. I know that there are some people who do. But at this point, they're an eyesore. We were told, they even have signs posted up and down the bike lanes saying, "No winter maintenance." Well, there's no winter maintenance, there's no spring maintenance, there's no summer maintenance, or there's no fall maintenance. So I don't know what that sign means. If someone could answer that question, this is the second time I've been to the Borough Council meetings and I've asked the same questions, and I have yet to get an answer from anybody. So again, Roland Street's starting to look a little crappy because these things are like random now. They used to be in front, there used to be like three or four in front of somebody's house. Now there's like one and a half because they've gotten knocked down or run over or whatever.
That's funny.
So again, I will continue to collect these posts as I see them, and I will make an occasional pain in my, pain in your butt to bring them here to you because we're trying to bring new, new neighbors into our community. They drive down Roland Street, they see stuff like this.
Okay.
So if you guys can take care of this, maintain them like we were told that the borough was going to maintain them, we would appreciate it very much. Or just take them down. Thank you.
Just for future reference, typically when there's, there's an issue, whether it's a street, a sign, a delineator, call Public Works, we'll take care of it. You don't have to bring them in. We appreciate it, but you don't have to bring them in. Johnny Corson, please.
Evening.
President of Pottstown, President of Pottstown Endoway CP. The decision as it may, would have made a sound. But I have to come, I wasn't going to say nothing, I have to clear my name. I did not make that statement that I backed Warrior Town taking over Wicket Center. Statement I made, because that would be that me as president of Endoway CP going against the executive committee of the Endoway CP. We voted to give it to Parks and Recs, we wanted you to give it to Parks and Recs. And then Warrior Town, why dare we see anybody come underneath and support Parks and Recs? That was false. It was a misunderstanding of how it got out that way, but that should not have been said at that council meeting. I took a beating. People called me and said, "How dare you? Who do you think you are to make that decision?" Without talking to us. That's number one. Number two, to save taxes. When you mentioned the word taxes, everybody knows that once you say you have to raise taxes, people won't go enough for it. That was not fair. Taxes did not have to be raised to get to Senator, Parks and Recs. They would not have been raised. But like I said to that council person, need to get off your butt and do your job. Go to Health Wellness Foundation, go to the Hill School, go to Hoagard's Run. They could have gave you the money to offset taxes. Warrior Town could have came in and helped Parks and Recs run the building. Why dare we say that? That's what we wanted, that's what the community does. Take it outside, you guys made that decision, but that is unfair, the way I see it, that is not fair what happened. For this side of the room to believe in the borough, in the belief in Parks and Recs, which we paid taxes for, that side of the room to say, "No," that disturbs me. That's very disturbing. And since everybody's saying we care about the kids and we hope to see the community involved, since that side voted for Warrior Town, has that side been down to Wicket Center to help with the kids? That side volunteered, you moneyed program to help the kids? That side volunteered for Christmas next Saturday with the kids? I'm very confused and I'm very disturbed. And I'm actually, I put myself out there, I believe in the Pottstown. I thought that for once we could come together as a community. This vote that you guys did showed me that you really don't want to be a community. You really don't want to be a community. And that's very sad. And I want to say thank you to this side of the room for believing and listening to the citizens and trying to believe in your borough government and your Parks and Recs department. Because I believe Mike was doing a beautiful job, the assistance of other organizations underneath them, and we're doing the same thing that's going on right now with Warrior Town running, the same thing could have happened with Parks and Recs and trying to Warrior Town helping. So I have to say.
Thank you. Anymore?
No further citizen comments?
Okay, about councilors' general discussion. Mr. Prosser.
Oh, I just maybe kind of reflect on Mr. Corson's statement. I did mention that I talked to him that evening. I, you know, I hope I didn't give it the, the assumption that he was okay or was like the, our decision necessarily, but I just mentioned that I spoke to him and, you know, he wasn't necessarily happy about it, but I just said he was understanding, I guess, if that's okay.
All right. Vice President Kopp?
Well, we have a very busy month here in Pottstown and I hope a lot of our citizens participate and come out to Pottstown and see what's going on because I'm getting a lot of very good reviews for Pottstown. And people out shopping, be aware of your surroundings. I read something on Facebook that if you see, at night, if you see a woman with her children in a parking lot anywhere, walking alone, please keep an eye on her to make sure she is safe to get to her car with her kids. And that goes for anywhere in the country. So everybody, enjoy your Christmas shopping and we'll see you in a week.
Counselor Levins.
Counselor Kirk. One thing I felt to do, I probably should have done it, but I didn't mention about the volunteers. I want Ms. Neddy, stand up, please.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I just want to, to give recognition because she's one of the main ones who's there every single day.
She sure is, yes.
And she, and she, she, you know, she keeps that program running, she keeps the kids busy, she does all the scheduling, she, I mean, she is busy every single day volunteering, I don't know if she's paid or not, but, but she, you know, she's there every day, she makes sure that place runs, nobody else is there. Nobody else is there. She's there to make sure that place runs. All of that's a go on, you know, all the volunteers that went out before are go on, she's the mainstay. She's there every single day. So I want to give her credit.
Yes, yes. It's because I care about my community and I care about our kids. That's the only thing keeps me there. And I just want that to be known. It's not about nothing but the kids. That's what I'm about. That's our future. We need to care.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Pius.
I would like to say to, something to them. Many thanks to the people, the my ward, sex. It was a great honor to serve all of you, regardless of what someone may tell you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you. Many thanks to the members of Pottstown Borough Council who served me with me for four years. Thank you for your support and I'm very proud to be the first Latina woman serving as a Borough of Pottstown and I hope will not be the last.
Right.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Feliz Navidad y Ropero Anual. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Lindsey.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to be short because Madam Mayor said everything, Peggy said everything, Justin said everything. Like, I feel like everybody's, before I was like, blah, 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 now I just, I don't have nothing really to say, but I do have to have something to say. Okay, I was going to say, I was going to say something about the breakfast at the Carousel December 14th, but they said tickets were sold out, but I will check just to make sure, you never know. And of course, don't forget to look out for Santa December 21st. See, Chief said something about that, you know, so, so don't forget to look out for that. I know my grandbabies love looking out my bedroom window and, and looking and waving and stuff. And let's see, I will be going to Harrisburg December 18th. They have a rally there, is dealing with education and a little bit some, like, fair funding. Trying to think, sorry, sorry. Oh, and I will be there tomorrow at noon for the press conference, so if you have time, it will be helpful for you guys to, you know, attend this, the press conference. Also, if you can just keep your thoughts and prayers for Potts Grove, they had an incident there at the school, and just keep the school, the family, and the kids in your prayers. And Carol and Rita, I'm going to miss you guys. I appreciate the support because I was a new kid on the block and you guys, you know, put me under your wing and you were my female guidance. So I'm going to miss you guys, so, but don't be no stranger. I want to see y'all out there and booting for, you know, I want to see y'all still. Rita. That's it, that's all I have.
Here, Hendrick.
No, I've set it up, thank you.
Set it up? Okay.
Right.
I, I really have not much to add, but I will address our TV audience, since you won't be watching our Monday night program. I, I just want to wish everyone a happy and safety New Years, Christmas, holidays. For the next 30 days, be safe, be happy, and we'll see you next year. There is no need for an executive session this evening.
President Warren, can I say something before you finish?
Go ahead.
Okay, for the first time, will be Britten Guadalupe and the Christ Episcopal on December 12 at 4 o'clock. That's will be mariachis in there and there will be Spanish service. That's I would like to invite everybody to see, it's a new costume Mexican in there and they're going to be Spanish food and a little bit of dancing and have a good time with everybody.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Wonderful. That's it. TV land, we'll see you next year. Meeting adjourned.